Grow an understanding of our own motives, knowing that people often act out of their own fears. Maybe we be a force for replacing, may we be the force for replacing fear with insight, helping us all to be patient and kind as we talk. Strength, real strength can always find compromise. Working together, may we find a common ground, enable us to move forward with the shared purpose. May we see what is truly important and unites us, focusing on that to banish any roadblocks of egos and fears. Today, may we be open to others' ideas and beliefs. Please remain standing for the pledge of the flag.
[Inaudible]
Next, we have approval for the agenda.
I have a couple of changes.
All right.
I'd like to remove, under new business, B, the civility code, and C, the city clerk evaluation, and move that to the next workshop, workshop that before it comes to a regular meeting.
Excuse me, but can I ask why? We're gonna remove-
Because I would like to discuss it in a workshop versus in here now. It'd be a workshop item and be workshop before it comes to us here.
That makes sense. When I saw that, I thought it needed to be in a workshop as well. So can we add that to the workshop agenda setting meeting then?
Is it the pleasure of the board to move those two items to the workshop that we're looking to have on the 31st, or move that to the workshop in August? Because we've already added the special events, policy review, and that puts us at over six items. If it's the pleasure of the board, we can certainly add it, add those two items, it just-
August is fine to me.
I would move that we, that we can wait until the first workshop in, in August, definitely, for those two items. I think I remember when we had discussed and had all the information with regards to the city clerk evaluations and stuff, we had, I thought that we had intended to put that on a workshop before we brought it back to a meeting.
We, originally, to your point, Vice Mayor, we, we did want to bring that item, it was direction from the board to bring that item back, and I believe to bring it back to a workshop. However, with the six-month evaluation being completed with the clerk and understanding how the clerk wanted to handle this situ-, or how the board wanted to handle this situation, we wanted direction because we're finalizing the fiscal year 2018 budget, and so the faster we can get that information and solidify what direction that the board wants to go with regards to compensation, or if it's effectively looking to do something in, in October, that's fine, but we were just looking at it from getting those things completed. And since we already have a lot of things jam-packed on some of the workshop, it was intended to see if the board was interested in having the discussion at, at the regular meeting. But if it's the pleasure of the board, we can, we can make it work.
Would you rather, excuse me, put it on the budget meeting? The evaluation?
We, yeah, we can do that.
And then do the civility one in August?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that work? That works.
I know I don't stand a chance in changing anything here, but I just feel the city clerk, she's been here six months. Her evaluation should have been done back in April, April 24th, and to make her wait another month or two, it's really not fair. It was not.
And it's not, it's gonna be next week. It's gonna be on the budget meeting in the 17th.
And she had the evaluation already. This is during the conversation. Right, we all did, we all did the evaluation, and I felt like it was pretty well discussed at the time, we all gave our views and everything. But I think it's very important that we do not neglect that and make sure that is done then.
So just to restate, the direction from the board is postpone the civility pledge or civility code to the workshop in August, and the city clerk's evaluation and compensation discussion to the July 17 budget workshop of the Board of Commissioners.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Maybe we can make sure we put it up there so we don't have to tie it somewhere else.
Any more changes or discussion for the agenda? I will entertain a motion then to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as changed.
I'll second.
Any comments from the staff or commission? The city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthier?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
And next, we have a presentation from the Director of Gulf Beaches Library, Vincent Gadrickx, am I pronouncing that correctly?
Dejers.
Oh, it's closed.
Good evening. My name is Vince Gadrickx. I'm the, I'm the Director of the Gulf Beaches Public Library located here in Madeira Beach. This August will be one year since I've been working as the Director of the library. Tonight, I would like to give a mid-year update about where the library stands in our operations and some of the things we are working on, and will be working on in the coming fiscal year. Excuse me. One thing that makes the Gulf Beaches Library unique, not only in Pinellas County, but in the whole state of Florida, is the fact that it's not a standalone municipal library. It is an independent 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation. Virtually all the public libraries in Florida are departments within their single municipalities that they serve. So that offers a unique challenge to the Gulf Beaches Public Library. It must coordinate the delivery of library services under the auspices of multiple municipalities rather than just one. In our case, these five beach communities consist of Madeira Beach, North Reddington Beach, Reddington Beach, Reddington Shores, and Treasure Island. Recently, the library submitted its fiscal 2018, 2019 budget to the five municipalities. The total requested to be divided among the municipalities is $348,054. Given Madeira Beach's population of 4,368 residents, which makes up 27% of the five beach communities' population, we requested $93,253 from the City of Madeira Beach. 63% of the library's funding comes from the five beach communities that make up our service area. We thank you for your past and your continued support. The residents of Madeira Beach are using the Gulf Beaches Public Library. Last month, 6,922 items circulated at the library. That includes all the items that patrons checked out, such as books, DVDs, books on CDs, to name a few. These checkouts cover a whole range of items, from adults to children's materials. Our year-to-date circulation is 69,600 items. Year-to-date, Madeira Beach library cardholders checked out 17,441 items. That means 25% of all the library circulated materials were checked out by Madeira Beach residents. When you compare those same Madeira Beach residents' checkouts with just the five beach communities alone who financed the library, Madeira Beach cardholders accounted for 44% of the library's circulation. There are approximately, as you know, 4,368 residents in Madeira Beach. 3,365 of those residents are registered cardholders at the library. Therefore, 77% of Madeira Beach residents have a library card from the Gulf Beaches Public Library. The Gulf Beaches Library has a total of 10,374 registered cardholders. Madeira Beach residents with library cards from our library make up 32% of these total registered cardholders. Again, if you just look at the five beach communities who financially support the library, Madeira Beach residents account for 49% of the library's registered cardholders. These numbers indicate that residents of Madeira Beach make up a significant proportion of the library user base in both library circulation and registered cardholders. However, we believe that these numbers in coming years will be stronger, not only in Madeira Beach, but within all five of the beach communities that financially support the library. We are taking actions to make this happen, particularly in our most significant untapped user base locations. Unlike the numbers I just spoke about concerning Madeira Beach's use of the library, the thing, the same things cannot be said of all five of the beach communities, in particular Treasure Island. For instance, Treasure Island's 6,819 residents account for 42% of the population of our five beach communities. However, these residents only account for 14% of cardholders in the beach communities. Likewise, Treasure Island residents account for only 16% of total, total circulation. This problem has existed for decades, with no solution or dedicated actions formulated by the library. The library has bypassed thousands of potential cardholders who in turn would access all the services the library has to offer. This year, the library applied and received an LSTA grant for $32,900. We will use this grant money to install a library vending machine that we call the library lending machine in Treasure Island. This, this is an amazing way to extend library services to an area that is not utilizing the library. The library lending machine that will be installed in the Treasure Bay location will hold upwards of 500 books. Approximately 75% of these materials will be for children, 25 for adults. Our plan is to use this machine as a vital link between Treasure Island and Gulf Beaches Public Library. It will not be meant to replace the experience of being at the library, but rather a unique way to learn of the existence of the library and to also conduct basic transactions, such as checking out books and returning them. We also plan to conduct programming, such as storytimes, at this location. Over the last nine months, the library's public computers were accessed 6,188 times. The library had 2,831 Wi-Fi connections. More and more people access the library for computer and technology use. This includes the residents of Madeira Beach. This is something that we want to be sure not only meets, but exceeds the expectations of Madeira residents who use the library. In recent years, the library offered a download speed of about 10 megabytes per second. This fell far below the technology experience that patrons expected at the library. If a patron or visitor to the library was downloading a large file, the entire library's internet speed would decrease to as low as 5 megabytes per second. These were painfully slow internet speeds. This went on for years, and it's no way to bring people into the, the modern-day public library. But in the last year, we have not only reversed this problem, but we are doing so at a reduced cost. With the addition of some new modestly-priced equipment, such as a new router and switch, along with purchase, along with the purchase of additional super-fast internet speeds, patrons now, now have upload and download speeds upward of 200 megabytes per second. Previously, the library was paying $700 a month, or $8,400 a year, for their slow internet speed. When we purchased increased internet speed, it raised our monthly cost to 11, $1,145 per month, or $13,740 per year. However, after a lengthy application process, the library is now in the E-Rate program. This program, under the direction of the FCC, has been in existence since 1998. The library never participated in the discount that it offers. This program offers an 80% discount for internet access for schools and libraries. This means the library's new yearly cost for internet access is reduced to only $2,748. So we're now paying 76% less for internet access and have amazingly fast internet speeds to boot. During the last nine months, patrons passed through the front doors of the library 41,369 times. These visits included participating in library programs. So far this year, the library has held 34 programs for children with 347 in attendance. We are making a concerted effort to not only increase the number of juvenile programs in the library, but we started to do outreach to locations outside the library. We're working with rec centers of our municipalities to coordinate this type of programming. We were happy that Madeira Beach Rec Center walked over 15 children for our recent summer reading kickoff ice cream party. One of the staff from the Madeira Rec Center said that she was interested in bringing children to the library once a week to use the library. So we're in the process, process now of coordinating that activity. During the last nine months, the library held 192 adult programs with 2,145 people in attendance. The Gulf Beaches Library is used on a weekly basis by numerous groups, such as the Writers' Group, Investment Group, and Book Discussion Group, to name a few. The library shows movies Tuesdays and Wednesdays. Just this afternoon, people attended one of our movie showings. Our adult summer reading program has been well-received this summer. We are excited about many new programs that will be held at the library this summer and this fall. We had a fantastic response to the library's new adult art classes that, and plan to hold a series of these classes again this fall. We also have a number of author talks planned for the end of the summer and the fall that we are really excited about. However, increased programming, programming at the library means that the library will eventually face space issues. I think, as some of you know, the library's singular meeting room is only 408 square feet. We envision a time when the library can hold multiple programs at the same time in larger spaces. The library is exploring the possibility of using financial reserves that have existed with us for a number of years in combination with the public library construction grant to do a modest building expansion product, project that would provide a new meeting Lastly, the Gulf Beaches Library thanks you for your continued support. We look forward to working closely with the city of Madeira Beach to ensure that current and future residents will have a library that is vibrant, offers materials that are relevant and in-demand, technologically up-to-date, and provides exciting programs for residents of all ages. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you very much, Vince. We're very proud of our library, and I think you're doing a great job.
I have a question before you run off. Right here. Point through this, I see that you have 560,000 in CDs?
About 500,000.
Is that for the expansion, or what is that?
That, that money has existed for a number of years, primarily through larger donations, you know, estates, someone might donate 25,000 here, 20,000 there. So it's been around for a number of years. And it's always been a concern for the library board, both present and past, that we want to be using that money for something. I mean, we're not an investment firm, so we want that money moving out the door. So one of our greatest needs is space at the library. Like I said, our meeting room is so small that we're really having issues now, and as we do more and more programming, that's our biggest issue. So what we thought was, the state of Florida provides $500,000 matching grants for building projects. And we did exploratory research, and I, I'm from Pennsylvania, so from the last year, I'm learning about, you know, the Florida 50% rule or whatnot. And in our, our investigations that we've done, we found that we could really only spend up to about $500,000 for this, for this project. So what we planned to do was apply for the grant for 250, match it with the library funds for 250, and, and carry out the project.
So that would come out as 500?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What you were just referring to, thank you very much for giving the report. I wish we'd had all those figures that you-
I could send them to you.
You sent them to us, because they're very impressive, and they really, you know, do show a lot. And unfortunately, we didn't have those figures. So I looked at the audit report that had been sent, okay? And I had, and by Crawford &amp; Jones?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Because that was given to us, okay? I guess I had a couple of questions. Number one is, do you still keep the patronage reports? I think we used to call them patronage reports that we used to do when, or that the previous director had done when I was a trustee, showing year, year-to-date, or month, and then year-to-date for the last, for this current year, and then the past year, on category of books?
Yeah, we do. We do that at every, every board meeting.
Okay, because I had asked, I, I would just love to see that.
Sure.
I like to, I think that's a very good report, because it's just kind of a common-sense thing, okay? But since I didn't have that, I went and I looked at the Crawford &amp; Jones report, and I had two items that I just wanted to ask you about. You might not know them offhand, because I just caught them this afternoon. It was for the schedule of revenue and expenses, okay? For the period ending September 30th, 2016.
Okay.
Okay? Versus 2017. So you wouldn't be familiar with that, because you didn't get there until August of 2017. But it's something that I think was pretty important, okay? One of those figures was the non-resident memberships, okay? It was on these exact pieces of paper, okay? And, because I looked at them just to see how they had either gone up or gone down. And I noticed that the, for the year ending September 30th, 2016, the non-resident memberships was 5,939.
Okay.
Okay? And for the year ending September 30th, 2017, it had dipped down to 4,194, which was a difference of 1,700, a loss of 1,700 memberships. And I'm just wondering, is that correct? Or what could we-
Or what-
Maybe attribute that to? Or, since you might not know, because you weren't here-
Well, I think, once again, over the last year, I've been learning the nuances of Pinellas County and how they gather their unincorporated people versus incorporated and all that. The way I understand it is that is, there's communities in Pinellas County that, that choose not to pay a tax to the county for, for library service. If you live in an unincorporated community and you pay that tax, you could go to any library and get a library card. There's a number of communities, I can't recall off the top, South Pasadena, I think, where they don't pay that tax. So when they want to go to a library, they have to pay a $100 fee for that. And sometimes, they go to the municipality, and then they pay it, and they come to the library with a, a coupon, or they pay the library first and they go back. But that's a number that we don't really have control over, outside people's use of the library. Where my main focus is always the five communities that send us checks every quarter. That's my number-one priority, what their circulation is, how many of their residents are registered. So that number is not something that I'm concerned about.
Okay.
If it's up 10% one year, or 10% down year, it's the give, you know, the ebb and flow of people in the area, you know, that, that's something we, we can't control.
So seven-
What we can't control is the people in our communities. Where, we know where they're at, we know where our shortfalls are, like at Treasure Island, which is a huge shortfall.
Okay, so the non-resident memberships probably represents communities other than the five of us.
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, okay. I didn't understand that. And then the other thing was, under, in that, on that same page, and this might, I don't know why, but anyway, the contributions, okay? There's a, a column for contributions, okay? That the, obviously, the Crawford &amp; Jones, when they put this audit together, had it from somewhere. And for 2016, it was $5,154, and then it had dipped down to $1,967 for the period ending 2017, which is a $3,200 decrease in contributions. And when I think that's contributions, I guess, I think, I'm thinking of the little bucket that, or, or checks that are written, or whatever, directly to the library, you know, not to any other supporting group. And I was just curious as to how that could have-
I would have to take a look at that. I can't remember if we actually have a donations line item, or if the contributions is-
Okay, because they pulled it out, so I would just be, yeah, I would just be curious about that. And I'd love to have a copy of the patronage report and the report that you just gave, because that was, I need to read it and understand it more. But thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
If I may, Madam Mayor, one of the things when I met with the library director is that the other partner agencies that helped form the local co-op have represent, representatives from the elected body serve on the board. At this particular moment, we don't have any representative from the board that serves in that capacity. And so staff's recommendation in conversation with the library director is, once those terms are set to expire, which I believe is March, if I'm not mistaken-
February, March.
February, March, that the board consider appointing a member of the Board of Commissioners to serve in that capacity, because obviously, there is a fiscal impact to the agency, but it's good to help identify some of the major ways forward for library services and how to work collectively in the cooperative. So that's something for the board to consider, but it certainly would be staff's recommendation that a member of the board is appointed to serve in that capacity on the library cooperative board.
But that would be until March, right?
Right, correct. We'd wait till the terms expire.
Yeah. We, we used to do that for years. There was a representative of the Board of Commissioners, one citizen, and one board. And I, I think that that's a very good way of looking at it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you. All right, the, the floor is now open for public comment, and I would like to remind everybody that this is only for public comment on anything that is not on the agenda. If you wish to speak about something that's on the agenda, you can do that before we vote on each item. Time is limited to three minutes. Please speak directly into the microphone. Remember to be civil and respectful, and to give your full name and address.
Good evening. My name is Pam Wickburg. My address is Gulfport. Talk to the lab? I need it closer? Need to lean in. I'll lean in. My name is Pam Wickburg, and I actually live in Gulfport, but I own a business, a Madeira Way. And I am here today, I've had invited those that I could get ahold of to come down to the store, and to Madeira Way, and to visit all of our shops, because we're kind of the forgotten little area. And also wanted to let you all know that I am representing the Madeira Way Downtown Merchant Association. We are becoming very active, and we'd like to really get some support by the town board behind us, to say that, yes, this is an important part of Madeira Beach, that we're the downtown area. I read the survey that was recently done and the results of that, and found some really fascinating things today, that out of the, the top three answers of, of what would you want to improve in three to five years, and this is from the residents of Madeira Beach, they wanted job creation, retail and shopping, and redevelopment. Wow! I was impressed, yet nothing is being done for our area. The other one was, which do you value the most? Top three, provisions of large-scale community events, which have been cut off by no more events on Madeira Way, promotion of an active, identifiable downtown. That's what we want as merchants, is we want to be identifiable and not vacant stores. And the revitalization of business and shopping areas. These are the top three results from the survey that you folks put out there, and this is what your residents want. All of the shopkeepers, we're not franchises, we're not chain stores, we're individual business owners, and we are, have invested our own money and our own time into these businesses. And I would like to ask you respectfully, if you couldn't possibly reconsider the no more events on Madeira Way, with the closing off of the road, the Wednesday market, the residents are missing it, they're coming into our stores, they're asking why it isn't there. We have one shop owner who actually had to close one of her storefronts, shrink down her size, because she's lost 40% of her business. So some of your decisions are very financially detrimental to the shops that are where your residents want them to be, and what we would like to become. So I'd just like to ask you to be our partner, and invite all of you. I haven't been able to talk to all of you, I haven't received a phone call back from one, I don't have a phone number for the other, and the other one wasn't available. But I have spoken to the two others. Welcome you to come down. We're open from Tuesday through Saturday, 11 to 4. Come on down and see, and go through all the stores that are down there. We're very unique, and we add a positive shopping experience to the Madeira Beach shoppers and residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? The floor is now closed for public comment. Next, we have the consent agenda, which involves the approval of minutes for three different meetings and the contract for the network people. and the contract for the network people. Any discussion?
Do you want to review the network connection contract?
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, this is a renewal agreement. As you know, this past December, the city did experience a severe cyber attack. And our information technology vendor was able to assist us greatly in defending against these attacks. And after the first contract that was approved, they installed some tools and security measures that prevented any further attacks from happening. And the recent workshop on the 22nd, Nate Friedman, who's the president of Network People, and Elias Leslie, who's their IT director, briefed the commission on things that they did and the tools that they have added. And they indicated that they blocked a total of 9,058 intrusions since December and blocked those from entering our system. And so what we're asking here is that first contract actually expired in June, and we're just asking for another six months' contract to extend that. The second portion of this contract, or the next, the extension of this agreement, basically will also provide training to staff to weed out and be more informed of what emails and other intrusions look like to try to prevent those. Right now, a lot of emails that are entering into the emails in the system have a quarantine designation to them and are actually prevented from going any further. And it's actually up to the recipient to actually go in and release that. And still want to train staff on being careful that some of these emails that are quarantined, they still may be very threatening. And so part of the second, part of this renewal agreement and the services that Network will provide is educating staff to be more aware of this. This is a topic that's hitting everybody. I was at an insurance meeting a week and a half ago, and it was very much a topic there. And providing cyber insurance to organizations. We very much, and what happened in December basically was an email intrusion. We definitely do not want to have any intrusions that impact our programs and some of our systems that we have. And that's where a lot of agencies, once that happens, it's just a very bad situation and causes havoc to the organization. So we want to prevent that, and so that's why this renewal is very much important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a question first for Claire. How many more minutes from me are we behind? How many more?
We have them all, we've got about five seconds.
Push your button.
We have them all up to date now. Because of all the meetings we had, we just didn't have time to review them all.
Okay, so you have about five more you said to go, that we have to go through?
And we'll be up to date.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes. Next, we have ordinance 2018-05. Director Portal here, there you are.
Mr. Clerk, will you read the title, please?
Ordinance Number 2018-05, An Ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, Providing for Amendment to Part II Code of Ordinances, Chapter 110, Zoning, Article II, Site Plans, Division II, Review Procedures, Creating Section 110-50 Designating Site Plan Review Categories and Separate Review Processes and Adding Hearing Requirements, Amending Section 110-51 Scope of Review, and Division III Plan Requirements, Section 110-71 Submission, Contents for Consistency, Providing for Conflict, Providing for Severability, and Providing for an Immediate Effective Date.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, these are, this is a second reading of the ordinance. It was approved by the board previously by a 5-0 vote at first reading. The intent here was to create the hearing process for special, for the site plan process and development review.
Any discussion from the board?
No, I think that's exactly what it did. I think it gave us parameters that Linda had created, or not created, but worked out in a proper display. And I move that we accept the second reading and of ordinance 2018-07 and put it into law.
I think the correct word you want to use is a...
I'm sorry.
A motion to adopt ordinance 2018-05.
Oh, do I have to say that one? Okay.
You need to use the key word "adopt."
Okay, a motion, a motion to adopt ordinance 2018-07 at second and final reading.
Or I could say, I move that we adopt ordinance 2018-05.
It's 05.
Pardon?
05.
05.
2018-05.
Your ordinance, the motion would be, I move that we adopt ordinance Number 2018-05.
I move that we adopt ordinance Number 2018-05.
And I second.
Well, I got that out.
Did you say you seconded?
I did.
Okay, I didn't hear that.
The floor is now open for public comment on this item. Floor is now called, uh, closed. Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes. Next, we have ordinance 2018-07.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, will I ask the clerk to read the title, please?
Ordinance Number 2018-07, An Ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, Providing for Amendment to Part II Code of Ordinances, Chapter 110, Zoning, Article 5, Districts, Division 3, R2, Low Density, Multi-Family Residential, Section 110-206, Setback Requirements, Amendment to Reduce Setback Requirements for Townhouses to Reflect Consistency with Other Uses in the Permitted District, Providing for Conflict, Providing for Severability, Providing for an Immediate Effective Date.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, this is a really long title for a very small change. This is changing the setbacks to townhouses from 25 feet on each side to nine to be more in keeping with the other types of development, the triplexes and things that are allowed in that district as we have found upon review that the use of the 25 on each side actually eliminated most, if not all, property within the city from any possibility of being developed for townhouses. We were having problems with every application that came in. And this was previously, the first reading was approved by the commission, 5-0.
I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance 2018-07 on the second reading. A second. Floor is now open for public comment on this item. Floor is closed. Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes. Under new business, we have Resolution 2018-09, Statewide Mutual Aid Agreement. Director Portal.
Yes, Madam Mayor. And this is an update to the existing mutual aid agreement. Back earlier this year, the state created a new agreement with a lot more detail and updated costs and procedures and also methods for appeal and conflict resolution. It would be, as always, administered by the State of Florida Division of Emergency Management. And the purpose is to ensure and organize an efficient provision of service during times of emergency. It provides for extensive organizational, financial procedures, responsibilities, payment methods, and equipment materials cost. It supersedes all existing mutual aid agreements, including all public words, mutual aid agreements that may be in place.
Any discussion from the board? I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, to read the right of the resolution, my tab.
Resolution 2018-07, Authorizing Resolution for Adoption of Statewide Mutual Aid Agreement.
I think it's 2018-09. As well, it's typed here.
Mine says 2018-07, but we make the correction...
Because it's a resolution.
In the record, 2018-09.
Mine says 07 as well.
It's a resolution, so it has its separate number. It's number seven, resolution, as I understood. Yours is nine.
And the agenda, it says 09, and in the packet, it says 09.
The emergency management, where they said.
I don't know if there is a resolution 07 or 8, or not.
It was originally part of the emergency management package. We apologize for the confusion. We decided to separate those two out, so it got its own number.
So it should be 09?
Correct.
Any discussion from the board, then?
I guess I don't, you know, reading this a couple times, I kind of get lost in it. Linda, could you kind of explain a little bit better? It's like if something happens, in my reading, if something happens somewhere, we go help them, but there's no dollar limit on it. There's no limitations whatsoever on the help that we provide. Is that correct?
Actually, they can't ask us to provide more than we have. It's mainly for the purposes of sharing equipment and services, not for providing funds. And any expenditures we have are usually reimbursed from the state for emergencies, after reimbursement for emergency purposes.
Okay, I didn't see that in there. Maybe it was, I just...
It's buried deep in their procedures. Very deep in their procedures, yes. We didn't propose any changes to their language. That's the agreement that everyone signs. It's, it works to our advantage as well. And what it does is makes the best possible use of the equipment. Not everybody has to have the same thing. For instance, we may have a street sweeper and somebody else may not. On the other hand, they may have something that we could use or everybody gets together and helps out one community that's in severe need and then can get reimbursed for the cost of the equipment and the gas and also the time for the employees, because as you know, there's some additional pay that goes to employees.
That's what I kind of thought, but I just didn't see the left and right limit, it just seemed wide open.
Would you like to address that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the board. The intent behind the state mutual aid agreement is to effectively identify the cost and the types of apparatus and what FEMA will reimburse in the event that we, as a community, are in a situation whereby other communities need to provide services, because you don't want to have a situation where if we send a fire apparatus with personnel that the Madeira Beach Fire Department's cost is $7,500 an hour, where another entity's cost may be $3,500 an hour. So basically, by establishing this, it sets the clear pricing parameters that FEMA will reimburse, and then it opens up the city for additional assistance in the event that we have an accident, incident here in our community or an act of God, that those types of additional apparatus and equipment, by us signing this mutual agreement, we, mutual aid agreement, we have effectively allowed for these operations and these other entities to come in and assist us. If we did not have this in place, if we are asking for assistance, they effectively will not be able to provide the services needed in the event of a storm. So this is customary in all cities across the state, and usually it's mirrored with your emergency operations plan. We separated it because there's some additional information that we wanted to make sure that was incorporated in our emergency operation plan as well as this particular document. But this document is critically important in the event that we have a situation where we're going to provide services and support to another agency or that we may need support. So this is very customary and sets kind of the guidelines and the parameters working with the state and the federal government. So of course, when, anytime you receive something from the state and federal government, it's chock-full of a lot of legal jargon to protect those involved. But basically, it opens the city up for the opportunity for assistance or for us to provide assistance to other local government agencies in the event that they're deployed. So it was very common during some of the storms, you saw a lot of the, back in 2004, when the Orlando area was hit, you know, outfits from the Tampa Bay area or South Florida were sending personnel to be able to assist with the understanding that FEMA will reimburse those entities at a certain rate. So that's basically what this agreement does. It memorializes and gives the authority to do that. And you see it on an annual basis.
I guess I got caught up in the legalese. I was reading, and what the heck are they saying? And then I was like, oh, thank you.
I thought, what does it mean? Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. What does it mean? Does it really mean if we help them, they'll help us? And that's really what it means.
Yeah. And by virtue of doing this, in most situations, you cannot expend taxpayers' money in other jurisdictions unless there's agreements in place like that. So it protects you from when a taxpayer says that you're sending your fire truck or your public work staff to assist. Well, there's a mutual aid agreement between both cities, and effectively FEMA will reimburse the cost to provide that service, because it's better if local communities work together as opposed to the federal government trying to deploy resources in a very restricted area. So they really promote interoperability amongst all local governments. So this is the mechanism to effectively do that.
And if I could add, we already have one in place and it stays in effect until we replace it with this. And it basically says the same thing. This one just has updated information and relationships. And I think they've added in some procedures for conflict if there's any question about payment and cost of services rendered.
Any more discussion from the board? The floor is open for public comment on this item. Floor is closed. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
We didn't do a motion.
Need to get a motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion for the approval of the statewide mutual aid agreement and adoption of the associated Resolution 2018-09.
I second.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next, we have a For COP SPX alcohol beverage application. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, and I believe Director Portal will form.
Madam Mayor, if I may, the city attorney would like to provide some perspective and some guidance as it relates to a quasi-judicial proceeding and how the board is to look at the item before them this evening. Quasi-judicial proceedings are where you take the code requirements and you put them on the left side of the desk, and then you take the application and you put it on the right side of the desk. What you're doing is determining, does this application meet the code requirements? That's different than a legislative act where you're actually creating the code or the complaint or the requirements. Now you're sitting almost like a judge, applying the requirements to a particular application. That's called quasi-judicial. You're not judges, but you're quasi-judges in this kind of case. That means the applicants and others are entitled to due process, notice and opportunity to be heard. We want to make sure that everyone has sufficient time, so we won't limit the participants to three minutes. They have as much time as they need within reason. It's also important that you disclose what they call any ex parte communications. Much like if you were going in front of a judge, you would not want to find out that the judge has met and talked with the... has met and talked with the other party and did not disclose that to you. So if you have met with anyone interested in this case, you need to say who you met with and what was discussed. It's important to say who it was, and what was brought up, and what was discussed. If you were handed any documents, you should turn those documents in. If you have had no discussions with members of the public or the applicant, then you don't have to disclose anything. I would just say that you have not met with anyone or had any ex parte communications. But it is important that you disclose that at the beginning of the hearing before there's public comment, so that if you have met with someone, the public has a chance to ask you questions about your meetings with persons.
For the record, I have met with him.
If you have any questions regarding the process itself, I'd happy to answer those now before we start, or during the middle of the hearing if you need guidance.
Mr. Brooks, I have met with some people.
Okay, why don't we go ahead at this time and go across the dais and take ex parte communications, who you met with and what was discussed?
Well, I can start, I can start by saying that I have not met with anybody. All I received is what was in the packet.
Okay.
Okay, do you need the names and everything?
Yes.
Okay, I was at John's Pass this past Saturday and spoke to some of the merchants. I spoke with Larry Butterfield at Kilwens, spoke with him. He was just concerned over the parking in the garage for this vessel that's coming in. We walked out on the dock, we looked at the waterway on the dock, and basically, that was, what we talked about was the dock and the parking, in the parking garage. The next person I spoke with regarding this was Jimmy DeLoso at DeLoso's Pizza, and he was again concerned with the parking situation. He felt like we didn't have enough room down there for the extra parking. He feels confident that he would still benefit from it in the end, like the late cruises that come in, because he's open late, and I think the last cruise comes in about 9:30. And I do believe, let's see, was there anyone else? No, the other ones that I went to see were not there, so those are the only two I actually discussed with.
Thank you.
Okay.
I spoke with the applicant, I believe city manager was at that meeting as well, and we, basically, he just explained what he was trying to do, and nothing, I mean, it's just a broad overall of what he was doing.
I spoke with the applicant as well, got a broad overview of the project.
Yes, the applicant asked to speak with me. I spoke, he spoke, and kind of explained what he was trying to do, and it was a very short meeting, because I had to go, I had another meeting, and I asked him no questions at all. He just kind of gave me a brief overview of what his plans were.
I would remind you all today-
Excuse me, excuse me.
One more?
Let me make one question. I did receive an email that was strictly in addition to, okay, but I did not speak with the applicant.
Okay, if we could turn that into the city clerk, make that part of the record.
That's fine. Right now?
You can have it now or have it later. You can turn it into the city clerk, the city manager will take it over.
Kenwell, excuse me, I did speak with the applicant also here at City Hall.
Okay. It's important that you base your decision on the information and testimony you're going to hear today in this hearing, and not on any of your ex parte communications, or meetings with staff, or meetings with the applicant. None of that information should be used to make your decision. If you need someone to repeat what was said, that's important that it be discussed here in this hearing, and that your decision is based on what you hear tonight, not what you've heard before, but what you hear tonight. Okay? With that said, can you all agree to do that and base your decision on what you hear this evening at this public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Let the record reflect, all commissioners have said yes.
But if we have a question on it, though, we can still ask it again.
It's important, you can ask questions to the applicant, you can ask questions to anyone that speaks, you can ask questions to staff, you have full rights of asking questions, just like a judge might ask a question in the middle of a hearing.
Okay.
If there's some information that you would like to know, you can ask those questions.
Okay.
The mayor will open the hearing and conduct the hearing, beginning with, I believe, with the staff report.
Yes, and do you need us to take a pledge?
Oh, yes, and we also must take an oath. Anyone who's going to speak in a quasi judicial hearing takes an oath, so we could all rise.
That includes us, too?
It doesn't hurt.
Doesn't hurt?
Yeah, it's supposed to. Do you, all persons who will speak on this item tonight, do you swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
And Mayor, Commissioners, we have an application for, as was read, the, an alcoholic beverage permit for use on a ship that would be docked at the dock known as the, in the Hubbard Marina. The property was posted in two locations, because unlike a business location, this has a place where they would be selling tickets, and then another where they actually would be boarding, and so instead of just posting one location, we posted on the wall outside of the garage where the ticket booth area is, and then also at the beginning of the dock, so that it would be most obvious to passersby and could see what was going on. It was apparently quite effective, because he was, we were getting calls already while he was still posting, so I do think it was an effective notice procedure. Also, we did the mailing for all business or property owners within 300 feet, and of course, had to take measurements to make sure that it was consistent with separation of 300 feet from any church or school or community center, youth program, anything of that nature. But of course, this area is already approved for alcoholic use in a number of businesses, and so it's not an unusual location. There are five criteria that we have to review when we evaluate a request for alcoholic beverage establishment, and we try to keep in mind that we're specifically evaluating the impacts of the alcoholic beverage use. This is not giving permission or use for a business permit. It doesn't imply approval for any changes that need to be made to the property or the docks. That would be a separate permit, but just does a zoning review effectively for an alcoholic beverage establishment in this location, to make sure that it's compatible with the area and other uses, and is safe in that location. It's something that would have to be in place and signed before the petitioner could go to the state and actually get their license, and also they have to have this in place just generally in order to apply for the business license or any other permits with the state that involve the use of alcoholic beverage. First criteria is the extent to which the location and extent to which the proposed alcoholic beverage request are adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood. In this case, the character of the neighborhood is marine commercial. It's a mixed commercial with entertainment, retail services. I know you're familiar with the area. It's working docks and offshore recreation activities. The alcoholic beverages is a use by right in the district. Cruise ships serving alcohol have been approved historically. There is nothing inconsistent between the proposed use and other uses currently in the neighborhood, and most of the activities associated with the alcohol would be conducted offshore. The landowner also has offered parking and has provided an extensive parking study that I can go over with you, that shows they satisfy the city's codes for parking. Criteria number two, we have to look at the extent to which the traffic generated as a result of the location of the alcoholic beverage would create congestion or present a safety hazard. Again, the beverage itself would be served on the ship, and the ship is at the end of the dock, and the dock is already approved for shipping and other boating activities. The use of alcoholic beverages off of, for a ship off of that dock, as I said, has been done historically in the past. The impacts of that previously approved ship were in place, although the ship itself was not being, the cruise ship or gambling ship was not being used all the way up to 2016, the use was extended and permitted through 2016, and so all of its impacts and traffic and anything else was included as that background number whenever we did traffic studies. There's nothing to show that alcohol on the ship in that location would create more congestion than any other expansion of a shipping business at that location. If somebody else were to bring on extra routes or extra boats off of that and increase their own business off that area, they would have the same impact. So all of those are addressed separately in the analysis. I wanted to make the point that the booth would not be involved in the distribution of alcohol, so there's no land use of the alcohol. Criteria number three, whether or not the proposed use is compatible with the particular location for which it is proposed. Again, alcoholic beverage request does not constitute a change of use, so this use is already allowed in the district. It is surrounded by other establishments that serve alcoholic beverages. Alcohol sales, service, and consumption will occur offshore, and the location meets the distance requirements of Section 110-530 of the Land Development Regulations. Criteria four, whether or not the proposed use will adversely affect public safety. The subject site is located in a commercial district that includes the use of compatible establishments that also serve alcoholic beverages. If the dock itself does need repair before it is used or needs any upgrade, that all needs to be reviewed as part of the business permit, and any changes that have to be made to the dock, including any maintenance, has to be permitted with the city and the county, so we will have an opportunity to make sure that it's accessible, appropriately accessible. Criteria five, no application for review under this section shall be considered if the applicant needs to pay any fees or fines. The applicant has no outstanding fines or penalties owed to the city under any section of the code. Now, the petitioner went to great lengths to evaluate the parking situation, because I told him upfront that that was a major concern of any new business in John's Pass, is just where do people park? And so they did do a review of the, and I believe that he had brought you hard copies. He actually went, he did an information request for all business licenses for the landlord's properties in John's Pass, and all that might have access or requirement for use of the garage. He went door to door, he checked all their occupancy requirements, checked up all, counted all their seating, double-checked that against their business permits, and actually did find that some people had misrepresented how many seats they have, as we expected. So now we have a lot of new information on everybody down there. We'll follow up on that later. And it's a study, as you know, we have talked about doing, but if any of the manpower, meaning me, to go down there and do all that counting yet. He also did the analysis, he brought us all the contact, the business license numbers and everything back in a chart. He showed exactly how many spaces would have been required under the normal code requirements for all of those uses, and then also showed, as you can see here, that the total required under the standard code would be 329 parking spaces for the uses that are owned by the landlord and which have access to the garage, and kind of an automatic demand for garage parking. The total required by John's Pass code, however, is 165, because as you'll recall, they're only required to have 50% of the parking required elsewhere in the city. The garage parking has 323 spaces. There are also 26 spaces in lot parking, and the total landlord provides, landlord-provided spaces are 349. He had offered in the letter submitted to us to provide six reserved parking spaces for, basically for the crew to assure that everybody has a space when they get to work, but there, as you can see, in terms of what he's able to provide, his properties, he has more than twice what is required. Now, obviously, many other people are using the parking garage as well, but the property, the landlord, the property owner of the garage is not obligated to provide parking for everybody down there, and so we had to review how much parking he provides for his uses. And we were also provided with a use log in an Excel form spreadsheet, which is also behind you, that shows how many visitor use they can handle per day at a two and a half hour spread, as compared to how many actually occur there, and shows that there's adequate capacity within the garage to handle more trips, or more parking than they are actually demanded of at the moment. In addition, the proprietor of the cruise ship has indicated that, as would be expected, they do expect that many of the people accessing and taking the cruise would be people who are already staying in Madeira Beach and visiting in the area, who would not necessarily be new trips. It's very interesting to look at the use log, and you'll see that July is very heavy right in the middle of the summer there, but it shows that it's skewed by the July 4th, if you were, and I'm sure you were all here on July 4th, and I know it took me an hour and a half to get home to Kenwood, so there were a lot of people out here. But as would be expected, the peak is during the tourist season, and it goes quite low, actually, at the end of the year. That concludes my presentation. We do have, well, I don't have it on, we're having trouble accessing this site over here, but I know that the petitioner has brought his report in, if you wanted to see the full report on the parking. Does the commission have any questions?
I've got one. What happened to the spaces when the previous boat pulled out that used to be there? I mean, you know, there had to be spaces.
That were used for parking?
Yes.
Well, yes. It's been quite a while since the gaming, the gambling boat was no longer in use, and so, as was discovered in the review of the business, many people have expanded their business and put more tables in, or changed from one use to another, the newer use, which requires more parking, and over time, the spaces have been used in part by surrounding businesses, but it's hard to say that all of them have been used up, because there is still some capacity in the garage. It's expensive parking in the garage, so people look to go elsewhere.
So every time a business there expands, they go from three tables to six tables, do they need to come in and ask for a permit, because now we-
Yes.
But they're not?
Not all the time.
Okay.
That's why, that's why I said the report will be very handy. I'll have to go back, because we knew that was the case, and we had actually recently begun doing inspections. The fire department is going around doing inspections to make sure that everybody is within their fire code, at least, for their occupancy and their table count, and in some cases, we have had to tell businesses to take tabletops out and take seats out, because the building just couldn't handle it. Also, we've got to deal with the parking issue. It explains why we have more and more trouble with parking over time without seeing a really dramatic change in actual buildings going up, just because uses do change without our approval.
What happens in time if, after you do all your studies, you figure out, oh, there's not enough parking spaces for what's there? Then what happens?
Then we don't issue any more permits. If what's used, if people have illegal uses and they have too many tabletops, too many seats, or they're overcapacity, or they've changed the use without a permit, they would be required to back off of that, take some out. Most of it's related to the occupancy of the building itself, but sometimes people may have to come in and request a permit in their rears. You know, if it's an after the fact permit, it's going to cost them a lot more to get it, and we'll have to do a review to see exactly how it fits in. Either that, or we're going to need more parking.
What was the occupancy of the casino boat versus the one that wants to come in?
Yeah, the occupancy of the casino boat was about twice, I think it was more than twice, of the boat that's coming in.
There was one casino boat, I believe, a long time ago, I mean, there've been four or five different ones, and I really thought that it had been prior to 2016, when the last one-
Yes.
Actually, I thought it was like 2014. I didn't realize it had just been a couple of years ago, but there've been casino boats in there that the occupancy, or the thing that they had printed on the inside of the vessel itself, was definitely over 300. It was like closer to 400.
Yes, that's my understanding.
And if you're looking at the- And if you're looking at the, and some of that was even, some of those boats were even done before that parking garage was there, when there was a two, I believe it was a two-story parking garage. So I never really realized that, I mean, I've lived there for 40 something years, but I never realized that we even had any codes down there anymore because of the expansion of so many of the businesses and the violations of, you know, proper number of, you know, if you need eight licenses, do you really have eight? So I, yeah. I know I've often gone down there and counted the businesses myself, just to see if the parking, you know, within that parameter offers enough spaces, but.
Well, the good thing is they did actually mostly have their licenses, you know, at least they were paying their business license. In regards to when the gambling boats, casino boats left, I know it's been longer than 2016, but the land lease for that use was in place through 2016. My purpose in looking in that was that the traffic impact would have been, of that boat would have been included in all background traffic analysis for buildings, basically for buildings we have up right now, because everything we have being built now had its traffic impact studies prior to the summer of 2016. So just looking at the, when I'm looking at traffic and if it's drawing more traffic in than was anticipated, I could say that it was not going to draw in more traffic than anticipated by the existing land, the existing background traffic analysis.
So do we open it to public?
The applicant.
Comment?
I believe the applicant goes next.
Good evening. My name is Craig Taraski, I'm attorney with Johnson Pope, St. Petersburg, Florida, 333 Third Avenue North, St. Pete, representing the applicant, PGS Cruises. Can you introduce yourself?
Phil Henderson, President and CEO of Starlight Cruises. We manage several family-held companies, one of them which is PGS Cruises, I'm president of that company as well. And it's the, that's the company that's bringing in the Calypso Breeze, which will be a 150-passenger vessel that will be doing lunch and sightseeing and evening dinner dance cruises. And the casino boat was 425 passengers. I do have the parking study that I did, shows that our landlord is providing adequate parking as per code for. Ms. Portell has just gone over, but it shows that the landlord is providing all of its tenants the proper amount of parking, in fact, is providing double what is needed per code. So if there are businesses out there that have gotten bigger and slipped under the wire, that's not under the businesses there.
Could you talk a little louder? I know the people at home can't hear you. I apologize. You gotta get pretty close to that thing.
If there are businesses that have slipped under the wire, the businesses that are tenants of the landlord shouldn't be punished by that, the fact the landlord is actually providing double the parking that's required per your codes for all of his tenants, and I'm one of the tenants. We have leased that space in August of last year, unfortunately, between a six-month plan review, Coast Guard delay, and a shipyard that's moving much slower than I thought they would. The boat is not here yet, but we have effectively been in business there since then, but I can't apply, I can't apply for a business tax receipt until the vessel's actually here, and once it gets here, I can get everything done very quickly, so we're asking for the approval of the alcoholic beverage permit on the city level now, and then we'll go to the state once the boat gets here. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about, if you look on the last page of what I just handed out, that would show you the summary of the analysis. I actually, there are several businesses there that don't require any parking, the retailers that are around the parking garage, all of them said zero parking on their business tax receipt, but I applied three spaces per 2,000 square feet, which is in your code, and even if they didn't said zero, or if it was smaller than 2,000, I assumed that they needed at least to have three parking spaces to run their business. So I actually probably overstated the parking requirements.
And that would be correct, that would have been overstating their parking requirements. It's a ratio calculation that's done, there is no minimum threshold.
So anyway, you know, I went out there physically and did it myself, because I wanted to make sure that I knew that we were in good standing with the city and the codes to apply for the permit and our business tax receipt. I have several pictures of boats that we operate in the area. We have the Starlight Majesty in Clearwater, the Starlight Sapphire in South Pasadena, the Dolphin Racer in South Pasadena, and the Island Explorer, which runs sea-like safari trips with the Clearwater Marine Aquarium. We have six vessels in service right now, and the seventh will be the sister ship to the Calypso Queen, which is the vessel that operates in Clearwater Beach right now. We've owned that since 2006, and it's a tropical party cruise, and it's been very successful, very well-received, and we have a real parking problem in Clearwater Beach, and yet we can still manage to make it work, and all the tenants around us love us up there. We do a lot of group functions, and we bring, we'll bring bus tours in the day, and then in the evenings, a lot of times we'll have, in both afternoon and evening, we'll have wedding groups, or reunions, or things like that, and a lot of times at 9:30 the boat comes in, and they've all agreed they're going to the Crows' Nest, which is a block away. It's a rooftop lounge on top of one of the hotels there, and just continues from there, so that's going to be the same thing that happens in John's Pass. As I said, this is a rendering, we'll call it, not an artist's rendering, but this is what the Calypso Breeze will be. Overall, it's 83 feet long, it's only two enclosed decks, so the size of it is substantially smaller than the casino boat, and to give you an idea, it's about the size of Captain Hubbard's largest fishing boat, which is, you know, pales in comparison to the size of the, of the casino boat. Get a little closer look at that. It's colorful, it's fun, we're very value-oriented, very concerned about our customers, we've been in business for 40 years in the area, I've been doing this for 36 years. I have, it's a family business, I have, if you can all stand up please, on the, on your right, my daughter Heather, my son Max, Charlie Ward, who's our chief operating officer, has been with us for about 25 years, and my wife Jenny. So it's a multi-generational business, and we've got several people who've been with us for 15 or 20 years, so if we're not doing something right, we wouldn't be in business that long.
I just want to reiterate what staff and your city attorney instructed you earlier. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, so you're tasked with reviewing the application, evaluating what substantial incompetent evidence was presented as part of that application, and determine whether the code requirements were met. You're, the roadmap is right in your code, it's section 110-532. Staff had already gone through the criteria, there's five criteria that you have to weigh the application against. To the extent that the applicant has met its, their evidentiary burden to satisfy those criteria, it's up to the city or any objectors to present substantial incompetent evidence to contradict that. If you have any specific questions about the application or their operation, welcome to answer those for you, but we will be reserving some time in the event that we need any rebuttal or cross-examination.
Mr. Henderson, we did speak here at City Hall, and we did talk about, you know, the two cruises that you have, the first one being at noon to 2:30, and you said that the people coming back from that cruise would have ample time to actually stop and visit through John's Pass, stop at the stores, the restaurants, the bars, whatever they wanted to do. But the evening crew that would come in would be 9:30 after all the stores had closed. Now, we did talk about at one point maybe doing some type of shuttle work, I mean, meeting the people at a certain place and shuttling them into John's Pass to avoid some of the parking problems. And you said that the afternoon crews would probably benefit from it, but the evening crews wouldn't, because by the time they go off the ship, they'd have to get on the shuttle to go back to wherever their cars were. Can you kind of expand on that in any way?
Well, when you brought that up, I thought, I did say that if, if I felt that was necessary to be successful, to be, for the business to be successful in that location, that I would look at doing something like that, but I think I would be doing a disservice to the, to my neighboring merchants and restaurants, because if I only gave them one opportunity to jump on a shuttle and go back to wherever their car was, then they're not going to have an opportunity to walk around and shop and so forth. As I said, the afternoon trip will bring in some bus tours, and that'll be part of the whole, the package for the bus tours, like, they've got a free event, and it's shop at John's Pass, see all the unique, you know, shops and so forth, and take the luncheon cruise. The evening trips, people may arrive early while they're waiting to board, they'll possibly go to Hooters or Bubba Gumps and, you know, an appetizer or a beverage, any one of the restaurants in that area. Some of the restaurants do stay open later, and at 9:30, people coming off the boat are having a good time, and they want to continue their evening. And that's what I've said, in Clearwater, they, they plan, the groups plan, we're going to the Crows' Nest, the party continues there. There's the Marina Cantina, there's Krabby Bills, they're in Clearwater, and they all benefit, and they all see our passengers before and after their cruise. So it will be a positive impact, and we will bring traffic seven days a week, regardless of the weather, regardless of the time of year.
So you did indicate that there would be buses that would be bringing people into the pass?
There'll be bus groups, tour operators, not my buses.
Okay, understand.
But there will be on occasion, we have senior tour groups that come from all over Florida.
Okay.
And we have those on all of our boats, and it's something we actively market, and we've actually marketed a trip that would come down and offload at John's Pass, we've done that a couple of times, and the Hubberts are very accommodating to let us use the end of that dock, just to do that, to bring people to the pass. We have a trip on one of the vessels right now that goes from our South Pasadena location four hours up the intercoastal to Clearwater, and it would be really great if we could start that or in that at John's Pass, but that would be a whole nother issue. Right now, we're talking about just this boat that operates two trips a day, seven days a week, you know, whether it's September, July, spring break, we're going to be bringing people through. And yes, there'll be challenges, but that's why we want to be there, because it's a, it's a busy, fun place. So we want to be in the center of activity, just like everybody else does.
And as we also spoke, two people that come in, they're not going to wait till 6 o'clock to come in to take the 6:30 cruise, they'll probably be there at 4 o'clock.
Some will, you know, when we.
They'll give them a chance to even shop at some of the shops there, too, before they board the boat.
The parking challenges on some nights, we would be doing a disservice if we didn't say, well, why don't you take an Uber or a free ride, you know, parking's a little tight on these particular days, so come early, and enjoy all that the pass has to offer, all the boardwalk has to offer, and they'll just, it'll be more entertainment for them, and then they'll get on the boat, and we'll leave on time. So it's all, like I said, it's all positive.
I understand, thank you.
How many people do you employ on the boat?
There'll be 20 to 25 employed on this vessel. We have about 85 employees right now, with the addition, this will be another 20 to 25, so we'll be over 100 that we employ in Pinellas County.
Since this is really kind of, I think, directed to our city attorney, but if, if we're just determining tonight the alcohol beverage permit, will we have another opportunity to discuss with the petitioner, the other parts of, or any other questions like what we're asking right now? Should we ask them now? Should we ask whatever questions we want, or limit it to anything that has that five criteria?
Well, that's a question you can ask Linda, but I don't know if anything else is coming before you, or this may be it. If you have questions, you may want to ask them now, and then determine whether they're relevant to the alcoholic beverage application.
Okay, will we have another opportunity?
No, the rest of it is administrative review.
Okay, then can I ask a few things? I guess number one is, is the boat, the Calypso, will be operating east of John's Pass, right? I mean, east of the bridge? You won't be going?
Yes, we will not be going out through the bridge, the boat will be for Lakespace and Sound's cruising.
Okay.
So we will not be going through the bridge with passengers.
Okay, well, follow me on this and see if it helps, okay? I live right along that strip on 129th Avenue, okay, right that is adjacent to the boardwalk, that follows the boardwalk straight down. In years past, when we've had casino boats and other gambling boats, okay, that offered alcohol, very often, those boats would come in, okay, and they'd come all, to turn around and come back into their mooring spot, okay? They would come all the way down our street, making lots of noise, and I understand, you said that yours is going to be over at 9 o'clock in the evening?
Nine to 9:30.
Okay, but will you, and then, obviously, they were staying out in the channel, but it was very, very loud, so do you have thoughts as to how your boats are going to?
Oh, we.
Or how do you do it in other communities where you have resident areas adjacent to where the boat is operating?
Sure, and a boat like this, you know, the pirate ship in Clearwater has music playing as they come back in, we do have a DJ on this trip, and we can make it a point if you think it's necessary not to have the music playing outside, but again, it's coming in at 9 or 9:30, the casino boat was coming in 11 or 12, and that would be a much bigger disruption, I think, that late at night compared to what we're going to be doing. And what we will be doing is we won't be coming in and turning around, we'll just be coming back through the area and approaching our dock.
Okay, and it will be a permanent mooring spot, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, so how do you handle then, because we had situations with this, and I know that everybody that I've ever known that has, has used the Starlight and the other ones just, is most impressed with your operation in Pasadena, so I can certainly attest to that, but how would you, how will you handle the garbage and the affluent? The garbage and the, I mean, is it?
No, we have, there's trash compactor is there in John's Pass, and we offload everything in between your cruise. When we come back in, we have trash on the boat, of course, that we've generated, and that is taken off after the passengers leave, then we clean the boat up and take all the garbage off to the receptacle, and, and everything will be, there will be, the boat is being designed to be self-contained. In other words, we're not going to have any landside storage, everything that gets delivered to the vessel will go directly on the vessel.
Okay, okay.
And then the only thing that will come off will be the trash and refuse that we generate from the cruise.
Okay, because years ago, there were issues on that, but.
Specifically, because I know there's limitations there, and I said we're going to design this, there's two walk-in coolers, there's ample storage in the hull, so every delivery will come, and we'll schedule those so they deliver, and it'll be delivered right on the boat, so we don't have to have storage here and people running carts back and forth when it's busier and so forth, it'll be all on, all on board.
Okay, and there's nothing that you all need to do to add the city to any of the requirements in case anybody would get off of the, would be either embarking or, you know, getting off of the boat if they were hurt or anything, because none of that is on city property?
That's correct, and we're, and the landlord doesn't have to worry about that either, we're holding them heartless, and that's a typical insurance policy on a passenger vessel like this, that anybody that's coming to the, to a parking lot or a parking garage and then walking to the boat, they're insured from the time they get there if they're coming, in fact, for a cruise, or to even acquire for a cruise. So the landlord is covered under my insurance policy, and we have a million regular and four million excess, so we've got plenty of coverage, and everybody's covered, and it's not city property, but, you know, the landlord and, and I guess the seat, the street is probably city, but, you know, it's to be covered.
I don't know if that portion of the street is, is property. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, could you clarify what you were saying about the outdoor amplified music returning to the dock? I did, I heard you say.
I said if it.
Put that inside or not?
We do that, we will have speakers on the outside decks, and if we feel it's a nuisance, if we're causing a problem, then we can just eliminate that when we're coming back in.
Madam Mayor, you can, you can approve this with conditions as well, so that could be something you specify.
Is it safe to say that you'll comply with all municipal ordinances, including anything with regards to nuisances or sound?
Absolutely.
All the same, Madam Mayor, they'll be out in the water and county space for a lot of that, and so you are able to approve with conditions, so if you wanted to specify that after a certain hour, outdoor music would be turned off during docking, you would be able to do that.
Right, but the sound ordinances, you know, at 9 o'clock during the week, or 10 o'clock, and then 11 on Friday, Saturday?
I would start with that.
Take care of it, we really don't need to put a condition on it.
I don't think so.
I would start with that, and if it's not adequate, then we can refine it.
And.
We, we want to be a good neighbor, we want to be, we're bringing a business to Madera Beach, we've operated at John's Pass with our Dolphin Racer at one point in time, but other than that, we haven't really done much here, and mostly in Clearwater, and in St. Pete Beach and South Pasadena now. We want to be a good neighbor, we want to be a good business in your city, and, you know, like I said, 40 years, you don't get to do that unless you've done things right and you're a good neighbor. So we want to comply with. So we want to comply with everything and we don't want to get anybody mad because it's just bad PR.
Do your boats in Clearwater go past a number of residences like they would here?
They do on Clearwater Point, when you're coming back. That's why I mentioned the Pirate Ship because their whole theme is, they're all outside and they're dancing and the music's playing, but they come in at nine or 10 as well and there's no real issue with it. There's some residents that are just across the way. In South Pasadena, there's residents across the street, several condos and so forth, but we don't have amplified music when that boat comes in. So we don't really have any issues with our neighbors.
And can I ask one more thing, please?
Sure.
And it is a steady cruise, you don't weigh anchor or anything like that, you don't stop, okay? It's just steady all around, just like you do with the Starlight Princess.
Right.
Is that typical of that?
Yeah, they have the Starlight Sapphire down there, unfortunately, the Starlight Princess is no longer, but everybody calls you, I'm the Starlight Princess.
Who's the Starlight?
Anyway, no, it's a constant cruise. We'll develop a route that seems the best for the afternoon luncheon sightseeing and the dinner cruise. And it'll be captain's choice a lot of time, you let them, give them a little variety, okay, I'm going to go north this time, this is to the south, whatever, you know, but they'll stay on the island waters and it won't be a situation where we would go anchor somewhere now.
Since you're acting, since you're, are in the pass, do you also have to go then, even though you're docking, you're mooring at, you know, Baderah Beach, but since you're going on the channel, I guess, do you have to go to Treasure Island too and get, or?
No.
No, okay.
All the island waters are, you know, higher government than the city level and it's more Pinellas County, I believe. And we stay in the marked channels and so forth.
Okay, well, my only issue would be really the amplified music after a certain...
Yeah, I can understand.
Okay, but that's got nothing to do with the liquor license?
You can, yes, you can condition the liquor license, that gives you powers because you're, to talk about the repeal of prohibition, if you, you have extraordinary powers on a liquor license, so if you want to contain outdoor amplified music on a vessel that's going by residentially zoned areas, you certainly can do that as a condition. You can pick a time that the music could be played inside and not outside, or you could do it by geography. Sound does travel far over water. When I was Penrose County Attorney, we got a lot of complaints about outdoor tiki bars on the opposing islands because the sound would even travel across islands. So if noise is a concern, this is your opportunity to agree to a condition with the applicant.
But does the city now enforce any kind of an amplified music?
Well, we have, we have, we have regular noise ordinances, but those were not really designed to apply across water. Those are more about bars and standing in sidewalks and standing on neighboring residential areas and decibel levels. Things are different over water.
Yes, and if I might add, the alcoholic beverage permit also doesn't specify a timing. Now, right now, the cruises will be coming in at 9:30, but there's nothing in the application that indicates timing of cruises or that there couldn't be later ones added late, you know, at another date. So I think we all know that crowds who are drinking do make a little more noise than crowds that aren't drinking and, you know, a party type atmosphere on the outside decks. It would be impossible for us to enforce later because most of that will be occurring, as you said, out in the county effectively, until you actually dock, you're not really in the city. So this is the time, if you're concerned about that, to work something out to codify what you're being told will be actually the way it occurs.
Basically, what you're saying is like if we want to say yes with no outside music after 9:30 or 9:15 or 9 o'clock, or whatever number, you know, we, okay.
Can we put something in the agreement saying that we are hoping that the ordinances will take care of the noise, but if it should be the public coming back and saying...
A nuisance to the public, that we can revisit this?
No, you need to do it now.
We do.
Can I ask what the city orders right now for outside noise is? Is there a time?
At nine o'clock on the weekday?
I'll have to go get the code to pull it in.
And 11?
I'm sorry.
Saturday?
Want to take a five-minute recess, like grab the code book if you want, or I can pull it up here online probably. It's okay, keep going, I'll pull it up online. I don't think it applies to the water and the boat in the same manner it would apply on land.
Just looking for a basis of, you know, a time that noise should be curtailed.
Right, because, you know, I know that, for instance, and I wouldn't want to be discriminatory in any way, or even have that perception of discriminatory, because I mean, it can be, you know, noon time on Sunday and there can be little powerboats going by, you know, with noises loud that will just about make you deaf, so it's very, it's very difficult to say, well, we need to, you know, impose a special...
There was, there was a time when the Elks Club was playing very loud and it was going across the water to these people and the police were over there with their decimal guns and all that, trying to determine, was it too loud and what they need to do, but it was traveling across the water. I mean, I'm eight doors down from the Elks and I can't hear it at all, but somebody across the water can hear it.
Outdoor amplified music is prohibited after 9:00 PM Sunday through Thursday and after 11:00 PM on Friday and Saturday unless approved by the city manager. So the current code would prohibit outdoor amplified music after 9:00 PM and then after 11:00 on Friday and Saturday. I'm sure the city manager doesn't want the burden placed on issue alters. So if you could decide today if 9:00 PM and then 11:00 PM on Friday and Saturday is sufficient, then you don't need to address it, but if you would like to restrain it on Friday and Saturday to 9:00 PM, you should say that, or if you have another time.
Mr., if I can, Madam Mayor, Mr. Attorney, doesn't that apply to property and things that are occurring within the city?
I believe that this area where the commissioner is talking about when it's coming back into St. John's Pass, do we own halfway out to the city, Linda? I'm halfway out to the pass, halfway to the channel?
I don't know exactly where the line is and how far out they'll be.
Yep, so it depends if they're in the city too. I mean, if they're outside the city, there's nothing we can do.
Well, I'm talking east of east...
If they're coming back in city waters, I know we do include waters in our city, not many cities have water, but we do have water included in our jurisdictional boundary.
Okay, well, I would be talking east of East End Lane to the marker that, I can't remember the mile marker, but it's in front of Eleanor's Island, it might be here.
Won't you add that to the survey? Pardon?
And for just clarification, the city manager would prefer that the board establish a time or a standard to effectively govern that because eight out of 10 of the phone calls will end up coming to the board to start off with, so I think you have to be comfortable with whatever the time is and the amount of decibels or what have you as it relates to the cruise when it does come back into the community, so.
Yep, this is not decibel based, this just prohibits outdoor amplified music after 9:00 PM and then 11:00 PM on Friday and Saturday. So if you want to alter those hours because it's an outdoor service of alcohol and people do tend to get louder the more they drink.
And that's for the outside, outside application?
Outside, inside the ship, inside the enclosed areas, they could have amplified music as long as they want.
Well, can...
But just the outdoor amplified music, it's just the compatibility concern, and the compatibility concerns come up with category three and then also category one, I guess. It's a little bit different than the other St. John's businesses that are stationary because it's going up and down the water and going by residential areas where...
Well, that's my question.
Bubba Gumps and Hooters, those are all stationary businesses, they're limited to 9:00 PM for outdoor amplified music and then 11:00 on Friday and Saturday.
How long will the boat actually be, like, for instance, your house?
Moving.
Moving, how much time would, if it's too loud, would you be inconvenienced?
Oh, it'll go by fast, I'm sure, but it's how it will wake people up at 10 o'clock if, because my neighbors, I mean, I'm telling you, they, you know...
It's already set at nine though during the week and he doesn't go out past 9:30, so it'd just be, it'd be 9:30 on the weekends, 9 o'clock during the week.
Okay, well, I'd go for that.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's in the ordinance right now.
Okay, then I think we should...
So a condition would be that no outdoor amplified music occur after 9:00 PM?
Sunday through Thursday?
Thursday?
And then 9:30 on Saturday and Sunday?
Right.
I think those are the hours of the boat pretty much anyway.
Can I request one thing? I was going to interject, but I didn't want to interrupt your discussion. There are times we do have charters for weddings and they may want to be out more than two and a half hours, possibly from 7:00 to 10:00. So since it's 11 o'clock on weekends, can we make that 10:00 on weekends instead of 9:30? Should I have some charters that come back, you know, that want to have a three-hour event instead of two and a half hours? The lion's share cruises will be 9:30, so that would be the only thing I would request is if you're going to put a limit on our operation where there's not a limit on shoreside operation, that at least maybe we make it, you know, 9:00 during the week and 10:00, not 11:00 on the weekends. Does that make, is that reasonable?
I don't have a problem with that.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I think it is too. I think it is.
We haven't taken public comment yet, so we could save those thoughts if their applicant has concluded.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're okay to go to public comment now then? So do you, Attorney?
Yes.
Okay. The floor is now open for public comment on this item.
Hello, my name is Captain Mark Hubbard at Hubbard's Marina, tenant and old owner. The, Mr. Henderson, his family and his operation is very reputable and very good for the community, but I wanted to come to you today, answer some of your questions. You were talking about the casino ship earlier. They left in 2007 and since then, Bubba Gumps opened in 2008 and Hooters opened in 2009. The Hooters, or the Bubba Gumps lease was signed in 2007, it took them a year to build a restaurant, and then the Hooters contract was signed in 2000, late 2007, early 2008, I believe. Took them about a year to build their restaurant out. So those are two large restaurants that were built. The whole second story of the parking garage hasn't been leased yet and the current state of John's Pass Village, we're just inundated during season. Cars wrapped all the way around the garage, all the way out into Gulf Boulevard, creating some safety issues, all the way down to the Delos's Pizza and around that corner. Granted, six months a year, there is ample parking in that area, but for six months a year during season, it is just packed. Now, why is that? The other merchants in the village are using the garage and it was intended to accommodate some of those merchants as we, when we built the garage, but there's a lot of other operations that don't have any parking and they're creating a hardship for the garage. We've been balancing that over the last couple of years. We, to combat that issue, we had thought about putting some parking lot attendants out there, but the few times where our customers can't find parking, we just have to go out there and find them in the line, pull them forward, find parking for them. The idea of bringing in another operation, increasing that parking burden, I felt was negligent as far as the landlord is concerned. Back in 2010, when we did the consensual foreclosure, we worked with an attorney to get a good lease for Hubbard's Marina. In that lease, talked about any available slips available to, that we would have first right refusal on. Now, that doesn't have any bearing on Mr. Henderson or his operation, it's more of an issue I have with the landlord and we have put them on notice and filed suit last week regarding this issue. In our lease, we are supposed to have first right refusal on any new leases, or any new slips that come available. Since 2010, we've tried to lease the entire dock and the current landlord refused to do so. And our business plan was to put a floating dock at the end of the dock and have fuel and bait and tackle sales enhancing the current Hubbard's Marina operation. Not increasing any new parking burden, but it would be for vessels coming up, transient boats come up and park. Hooters went as far as wanting to put a canopy on the dock, all the way out, an orange canopy. The landlord refused to allow them to do that. It's been a very odd relationship and I can't tell you why, I just, it is what it is. And we've worked as closely as we can with the landlord, they refused that operation and then we tried to bring authentic Pirate Ship in, like a floating museum. They would park out at the end of the dock and people could walk on and off the boat and experience a Pirate Ship in it, like the bounty used to be downtown. Not so much a cruise, but an actual floating museum. And this was all in the name of when we were putting the museum up on the second story of the parking garage, the aquarium was going to go up there. So that was going to enhance that operation, but they again refused to allow the lease to go forward, they refused the business plan, they refused to lease us that slip. So I give you that background. Mr. Henderson is just caught in the middle of this thing. The landlord went around and cut a deal with him without ever offering it to us. I learned of it at a conference up out of town with Mr. Henderson and again, it makes no sense, but here we are in this situation. As far as the city's concerned, the parking is a major issue down there and it, the other restaurateurs are, do have some issue with it and have talked to the landlord. Landry's is drafting a letter from their attorney to the landlord. So that's, only thing I could think of is if you okay the alcohol license and the occupational license for Mr. Henderson to operate there, then we would have to go forward with some kind of parking lot attendants to weed out the other merchants in the village to not allow them to park in the garage, because we would then need that parking for the tenants in that facility. As it is right now, there's, the businesses in that facility have a hardship during season. So an added parking burden for them, that would be the only solution I would have. And I would move forward in trying to achieve that. So any questions?
Mr. City Attorney, we have an opportunity to rebut?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? That's it?
No, I'm sorry.
Well, there's more public comment, let's take that person then, maybe you save your rebuttal.
One, all at once. Thanks. Hi, I'm George Lewis and I operate a business at 150 Boardwalk Place West along the pass. And like Mr. Hubbard, Captain Hubbard, I know that they operate a good operation and I think at one time actually, in the past, I spoke in favor of them in South Pasadena as far as reducing some of the parking requirements, but I also own a business...
Can you put the mic up a little bit closer too?
And I...
Can you move the mic up closer?
I looked at their plan and I felt that, you know, it was a good plan and I got up and spoke at city council in Pasadena several, eight years ago.
Excuse me, I think you still need to get a little closer to the microphone. That's better.
I do have a major concern about the parking issue.
Keep it up there.
Okay. A major concern about the parking issue and as, again, as Captain Hubbard pointed out, there's about six months out of the year that it's a non-issue, but there are six months out of the year that it's, I'll say, a parking nightmare. We have, I recently took photos a few weeks ago of traffic backed up in front of my business for more than 300 feet down 127th, or it's now called Boardwalk Place West, and another 200 feet up John's Way of cars just backed up. And to think that there's not a parking issue, you know, that's when they close the parking lot, when it gets filled up. And they do it frequently and what it does, it creates a major backlog of cars in front of my business and it really puts a hardship on me. This is right in front of our business, nobody can get in. And it's been that way for a while. I lived through the years that there was a gambling boat there and on the weekends especially, when the gambling boat was there, it was just, you know, a free-for-all trying to get the In my opinion, it's like putting another 150-seat restaurant on the end of a dock and in an In my opinion, it's like putting another 150-seat restaurant on the end of a dock in an already overloaded corner. And I use the analogy, it's like trying to put 10 pounds of popcorn in a five-pound can. I just don't... I don't know where everybody's going to fit. I look at a cure, and I think, well, wouldn't it be more practical, more viable for their business and for us if possibly they entertain going across the pass to Gators? They have more ample parking over there. They have the slippage. You know, one time they had a gambling boat and mobile charter boats operating out of Gators. Or they could go to the Holton property, which is in excess of four acres, right on the intercoastal, and they have almost four acres of paved parking lot right there. That's an alternative to them. I'm not trying to get them not to do business in our community. I know they'll do a good job. I just don't think it's appropriate for them to go in the position in the place that they want to go right now. So I just ask the commission, please consider that, consider our business person's frustrations with the parking. And with some of the recent advertised changes in the metered parking, I believe it's putting extra load on our parking garage over there in John's Pass. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and the people at home. I'm Missy Han, President of the Treasure Island Madeira Beach Chamber of Commerce, and the last two speakers are good, upstanding members of the chamber. There are other members that I haven't had conversations with yet, but our members... And what a wonderful problem to have, let's say that, the parking. It is... It's a problem. I myself go there to call all members, and I drive around quite a few minutes to find a spot. But it is going to hurt the existing businesses. So we are aligning ourselves or supporting the Hubbard's request to not issue this license.
Good evening. Good evening, Members of the Board, Mayor Black. I wanted to request, perhaps the City Attorney could shed some light on this. I wanted to know two things. We had discussed ex parte communication prior to this...
Excuse me. We didn't hear your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Corey Hubbard. I'm in here so much, I thought you remembered me. For the record, my name's Corey Hubbard, and for the record, I also am employed by Hubbard's Marina. But we had discussed ex parte communication. Is it not required to release to both the public and to the commission communication that's happened with professional staff and members of the public regarding this issue?
I think they went through and they talked about meeting with members of the public, also meeting with the city manager, meeting with the applicant.
Not necessarily members of the commission and the mayor, but professional staff such as the planning director, for example.
They don't have to. It's just the quasi-judicial decision makers.
Okay. So I just would like to make you aware of a letter that was sent from five of the most prominent businesses currently in John's Pass, Hooters, Bubba Gump, Hubbard's Marina, Kilwens, and the Friendly Fishermen. There was a letter that was sent to... Did you receive... Okay, I can check the date for you and...
Do you have a copy of the letter? You could turn it in.
No, but it's in... I sent it to both the planning directors' email, as well as the planning@madeira beach.gov, as well as I followed up on it a couple of weeks after that to confirm receipt, and also phoned the city multiple times.
The planning director's going to look through her email, see if she can find it.
Wonderful, because that definitely echoes unanimous concern with the level of parking inside the pass, as well as the active lawsuit that is currently being... That was filed by the property to... Against the property, the landlords, as well as has named the applicant in that lawsuit. The complaint was also furnished to the city, both to the planning director and to the city attorney. That's correct. Right?
It is. And we have also this letter from the landlord. I don't know if you have a copy, but it was in the packet.
That was in the packet.
Yeah, this is the landlord give them authorization to apply for this permit, so...
And I'm not disputing that, but I was told also by professional staff prior to this meeting that in the issue of an active lawsuit, that this would stay. Any decisions that were made tonight, is that correct or not correct?
Not correct, unless you have an order from a court.
Yeah, without an order.
And the city's not a party to that lawsuit.
Okay. Thank you very much for the clarification. Regarding the lawsuit, inside of the lawsuit, the complaint was furnished to professional staff inside the city. So if you do request a copy of the complaint issuing every single layer of the complaint that relates to breach of contract, as well as the ability for the dock at Hubbard's Marina inside John's Pass to sustain this much traffic. Within the past year, we, while loading one of our half-day fishing trips, heard a very large sound while on the dock and noticed a large amount of change in the dock due to the size and the amount of the folks that were, of course, utilizing it. It led us to alter the way that we run our business, as well as we've gone to the landlord repeatedly about the ability for this dock to contain a large number of people. I would like to bring that to your attention. Of course, it is inside the lawsuit if you're interested in reading more about that. As well as, in addition to Mr. Lewis's pictures, I'd like to furnish you with copies. Is that fine to disperse?
Clerk? I'm the district...
What you're seeing here, the black and white copies were taken on June 23rd, which is a Saturday, at 6:15 in the evening. And as you can notice, the cars wrap around the parking garage, both to the north side of the property, as well as to the east, making it absolutely impossible to navigate the roads that surround both the businesses, as well as the parking garage. I would like to bring what I feel is a significant public safety issue to the commission, that in the event of any sort of emergency services that needed to come into the pass, for example, in the farthest reach of the corner up at Bubba Gump's, if there was a fall or an injury of any sort, someone could be choking, anything that relates to emergency services, it makes it during season extremely difficult to come inside of the pass. We have approached the city, the professional staff of the city, as well as some of the law enforcement in the city regarding this issue multiple times, and we feel that our concerns were echoed by law enforcement in the city, that it has become a concern because at points, the traffic backs up so far that it actually backs up onto Gulf Boulevard, making it impossible to take that turn into John's Pass, which if you just evaluate from a layman's perspective, makes it quite dangerous to navigate. So from a public safety perspective, emergency services, we have been told by some members are concerned about this, that the parking is just 100% unsustainable, as well as currently the laws just are not being enforced regarding parking necessary for the businesses. It's down at Pelican Pier, there are multiple charter boats that pick up and drop off customers down at that dock. They don't have parking for their customers. They don't have parking for their employees, which continually puts a burden on the businesses that have been established inside of John's Pass for many years, not just ours, having been in John's Pass since 1976, but some of the other businesses that have built on that property and have been there in excess of 10 years. So this remains a substantial issue. I also would like to pass out copies. If the city clerk could just sort of actually pass this stack, sort of like show and tell. The top picture that you'll see has a sign that says the garage is full. Unfortunately, the folks that administer the parking in the garage feel it sort of necessary and complete to just essentially put out a parking sort of cone with a sign that says garage full. They refuse to send any members of staff out to direct parking to make it aware to the customers that are trying to access the garage that it's full. So the cars are required to sort of stand in a line and see the sign and somehow maneuver around if you spend... I know Vice Mayor Weinstein spends a lot of time in John's Pass. Perhaps you understand how difficult it is with any size vehicle to navigate the circular area around the... Inside of John's Pass. I myself drive a Ford F-150 and find it increasingly difficult, although every time I arrive in the pass and it's busy, I applaud it. I do have to mention this to the commission, that it increasingly is dense and makes it difficult to navigate it. So once you have customers there in a full line, attempting to figure out why they're not moving, and then getting out of their vehicles to come and look at the sign, this very small sign there at the entrance, it's just... I feel it's unprofessional. I feel it's not a good administration of sort of the rules for the city. It's not doing a disservice to the resident businesses, and frankly, it's dangerous. And just wanted to make all of those points clear. Thank you very much for your time.
Madam Mayor, if I may, we as staff have had some internal conversations with law enforcement and public safety and are sitting down to have a more in-depth thorough conversation as far as traffic flow throughout the village, and we would like the opportunity to get to a point at the staff level to share some concepts and ideas, even looking at when deliveries and offloading occurs, and even if it makes sense in some situations to allow for some of the roadways to be one way to help accommodate some of the flow in the pass. So we've had initial just discussions on the staff level, but we want to sit down and really put pen to paper. But that is something that staff plans on bringing forward to the board for consideration, certainly to be able to accommodate the flow of traffic and mitigate against any pedestrian vehicular issues. So that's something that we... We've talked... Law enforcement does have some concerns. Public safety on the fireside does have some concerns about the ease of moving through, especially where that parking garage is and where some of the high intensities are. So we've had some discussions, but we want to be able to have a more thorough conversation internally and then share some concepts and ideas, because we believe that we can effectively improve the traffic flow and get us out of the situation where traffic is backing up on John's Pass or on Gulf Boulevard. So that's something that, at the staff level, we're working on.
I got a couple of questions before they do the rebuttal. Mr. Brooks, explain to me quasi judicial again, you know, what do we take into consideration and what we don't take into consideration is number one. Second, you know, do we get to the point with John's Pass, well, someone gets traffic gets like this, we say, oh, no more people can come to John's Pass, we close it down completely, and I know the businesses don't want that. You know, if they go, oh, I'm going to Hubbard's to rent something or to get on cruise or whatever, we say, sorry, you have to go someplace else to park. I mean, I don't know where... You know, we stop it, we run with it. I don't understand.
Okay. The first thing to understand is that the criteria that you are to apply in this particular quasi-judicial hearing is listed in the staff report for you.
Right.
It's one through five. It's section 110532. So if you put that on the left side of the desk and look at those criteria, and then put the application on the right-hand side of the desk, does this application meet these criteria? You've heard from the applicant, their case, as to why they believe they have met each and every one of these criteria. You've heard from public comment speakers, various issues, objections, and concerns they have. They may be relevant to any of these criteria. It's number two, is whether the traffic generated as a result of the location of the proposed alcoholic beverage request will create congestion or present a safety hazard. That might be relevant to traffic flow, adversely affect the character of the neighborhood, is it compatible with a particular location? Those are the other criteria. What you are to look at is competent substantial evidence, which could be an expert opinion, an expert planner. We really haven't heard from any, other than the city's expert planner. But citizen-based testimony can be considered competent substantial evidence if it's fact-based observations. So if they're getting up and they're saying fact-based observations, I drive around, I can't find a parking space, I drive around, there's not enough parking, that is something that you can consider. There was a traffic study submitted, not by an expert, by the applicant. I don't believe it's by an expert.
What was a parking study? Not a traffic study.
Parking study. So you could consider that. You can consider that there is a letter from the landlord dedicating apparently six parking spaces on the upper level of the parking garage. You could ask Linda Portell as planning director, how many parking spaces are required for this cruise ship, whether six is enough. Those are all things that you can ask about. You can also condition the approval with regard to amplified music, and those are things that you can look at.
We don't take into consideration that lawsuit that they have.
The lawsuit simply challenges the landlord's ability to issue this letter in the lawsuit, which I have reviewed, and I'll put into the record. It was sent to the city by email. It states that another company in St. John's Pass was supposed to allegedly been given right of first refusal on this slip before it was rented to another boat company. And so that's going forward, but that involves tenant against landlord and tenant against starlight. So those between the private parties about who gets to use this space. But we have in front of us, the landlord has authorized it. Normally, we do require authorization of the landowner. That's what this paper is. Now, it might be that if they are victorious in their court case and the lease is revoked, then what you're approving wouldn't be able to be used anyway in this location, because then they would not have landlord authorization.
The lawsuit contains much more than the original contract.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and we're not defendants in the lawsuit.
Right. And that's what I heard you say earlier, and I heard her talk about the lawsuit, and I'm just kind of putting in my head, do we even consider that?
Yeah, the lawsuit has things like there... This tenant rented four slips. Two of the four slips are covered with sand and unusable, and they were never offered a reduction in their lease or any alternative space. They believe that they have a right of first refusal under the contract terms. All those are for the circuit court judge to sort out and decide. If it turns out that they did not have the ability to lease this space, then they wouldn't be able to operate in this location. If they go to another location within this city, they would have to come back for another alcoholic license specific to that location, and then you'd apply these five other... These five criteria to the other location.
Thank you.
Mr. Evans, you said that the city staff was working on some type of... Wouldn't say proposal, but something regarding the parking situation. How soon will that information be available?
We would anticipate being able to provide some recommendations on, you know, traffic flow, traffic patterns, and changes. I would say we can have something to the board for consideration, at least by your workshop in August. And this was something that staff has had conversations about for a little bit of time now because of the congestion that we experienced during, you know, peak and certain times of the year and those types of things. So we've even had, you know, like I stated earlier, discussions on limiting deliveries and when those things occur, because in major cities, that's what happens. You know, you can only deliver product to this particular facility at a certain time because of just the sheer flow of traffic congestion. And first and foremost, we want to protect and preserve the opportunities for public safety apparatus to be able to respond there and not provide any potential conflicts on Gulf Boulevard. So we would be able to provide the board with some recommendations, I would say, at the latest, the... Your workshop in August, if not sooner. So it's something that, just getting all our heads together and looking at some options and seeing if it effectively makes sense to do that, and then bringing it to the board for your consideration, and then the communication pattern that would have to... Communication strategy that would have to occur to the surrounding businesses in the event we made some modifications to how the traffic flow happens there. But it is something that is a priority for us.
Yes, yes, there are some other public comments. Go ahead, sir.
Yes. Gentlemen, raise your hands.
Good evening. My name is Don Smart, 13720 Gulf Boulevard, a new resident to your community.
You're welcome.
I did hear some testimony, and perhaps I could just have it clarified. I believe the applicant noted that they are employing 22 employees. the applicant noted that they are employing 22 employees. And perhaps this speaks to Commissioner's concern or question. But I also heard the applicant, and he can confirm it, that they had an agreement with the landlord to set aside six parking spaces for the 22 employees. Was that accurate testimony?
We'll try to answer that in rebuttal. If you can just direct the comments, and they'll answer later if they'd like.
Okay. Because there seems to be quite a disparity, a question emerges, where would the other employees park? Would they be competing with their own customers? Would they be competing with others of those who use the parking deck? It would seem to me that they're, that you would be in a position to perhaps settle that discrepancy. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Phil Henderson with PJ S. Cruises. I'd like to respond to each of the people that have made comments. First of all, Captain Hubbard stated that there was not a gambling boat since 2007. The research I did said the last boat left 2014. So, there was an active gambling operation when those restaurants were also operating, to my knowledge. And that's something I certainly researched. To the chamber representative, I would ask Missy Hahn if you have a proclamation or a resolution of sorts from your chamber that backs up what you just said as far as you're aligning yourself to support the Hubbard's. So, it's just strictly your... I'm sorry? Some members. Oh, they are members. Okay. Missy, have you ever worked for Starlight Cruises before?
I did.
And why did you leave? Why did you leave? I think you were terminated. The John's Pass, with regard to Corey Hubbard's statement and the petition she's placed with the planning and zoning director, she did seek support from the merchants. She sought support from the merchant association, and the merchant association had a meeting and decided that they did not want to support that letter. They said they would write their own letter on the issue if they wanted to. But I talked to Sunny Flynn, and she had told me personally that the board members were behind bringing the boat in, and she thought that the majority of the merchants would like to see the boat there. In the cover letter that Corey sent to all of those merchants that ended up at the bottom of the petition, she said that the boat would be taking up, would be wreaking havoc on their ability to operate their businesses while taking up hundreds of parking spaces. Our average cruise is around 75 people. One per three, that's going to be 24 cars at most for passengers, not hundreds. It's only 150-passenger boat. So, I think that some things were misrepresented in that cover letter. I think that they had gone around and talked to those other businesses, Hooters and Bubba Gumps and Friendly Fisherman and so forth, and said, it's going to be like the gambling boat all over again. It's going to be hundreds of parking spots eaten up, and always people coming in and getting on a boat and doing their thing and then leaving. And it's quite the opposite, as I've tried to convey to all of you. There's a couple of other things, but I'm not going to go that far. The one other thing, the gentleman came up about the parking. I asked the landlord to, or I asked the realtor who did the agreement to provide me with, you know, a guarantee of so many parking spots in the garage. What they did was they, the reason why six was called out was because those are going to be six that the employees do not have to pay for. They didn't want to put anything else in the agreement that didn't have a monetary value to it. So, the six spaces, and it was misstated in the letter that he sent, that the property manager sent, because it does say to support your business tax license, we need 19 spaces to support our business tax receipt. But as I've shown you in that parking study, we have, the landlord is providing more than double what's needed for all the businesses that are there, per your codes. And I want to emphasize that, it's per your codes. Now, I said 20 to 25 employees, that's true, but they don't all work at the same time. We're running seven days a week, two trips a day. There's about eight onboard on a full boat. So, it's not going to be needing 22 individual cars coming in and taking up spaces. Those are the rebuttal for all those. So, I would just ask you to keep in mind that, you know, we are abiding by the codes. If there is something that needs to be done as far as traffic flow and so forth to improve the situation, I welcome it. But we decided to set this business up, you know, over almost a year ago and did the research, knew that we could meet the codes that are present today. And I'd ask you to do your, make your decision based on the city codes and whether we comply with those.
Craig Turaski again for the applicant. Phil, can you tell me when your lease commenced?
August of 2017.
And you've been paying rent since then?
Yes, every month.
Thank you. I have a copy of that letter from a number of business organizations in John's Pass dated June 25th. I believe this was provided by Corey Hubbard. It's not signed by anybody. It just has a list of business operators at the bottom without any signature and without them here to be present to be cross-examined. I would just take this as Corey Hubbard's objection to this application. You heard a lot about the lawsuit. The lawsuit is completely irrelevant to the application that's before you today. It's a private matter between businesses. It's unfortunate, but it doesn't involve the city. The, you know, in a way, the objections that you've heard from the Hubbard's could be a red herring. It could be part of the strategy that they're leveraging against the landlord and their dispute, trying to keep the tenant from operating under their lease. So, I'd take that into consideration, whether their motives are truly based about traffic. To the extent that the city is working on some operational fixes for the traffic flow within the pass, that's something that's between the city and the property owners and operators, all of them within that area that are involved, doesn't necessarily affect this application itself. The pass, you know, it's been expanded over the years, but I think the last major expansion was in, correct me if I'm wrong, 2007 maybe, 2008, somewhere around there. And then, yeah. The commercial docks, the five-slip commercial docks, been in existence to at least 2002. When a development like this comes into the city, they have to, you know, to establish that they have adequate parking, concurrency, which is adequate transportation and other public services. You know, a full concurrency review and transportation review doesn't typically happen with an alcohol use permit, since this is just a replacement of what was the prior use in the exact same location within a zoning district and an established development that has similar and historically identical uses. This ship, 150 passengers coming in at less than half of what the prior operator had. So, obviously, there'd be, you know, less demands. The, you know, some of the objections that you heard, you heard a lot of secondary information, somebody said this, somebody said that, they didn't show up today to object. So, I would dismiss those hearsay objections. You know, we provided, the applicant provided substantial evidence on the parking that exists in that development and how it satisfies the code requirements. You know, if there is, you know, parking problems during some peak times, it may be that the code requirements are light, but that is not the fault of the applicant. The applicant is coming into an established development that has met those parking requirements. And to the extent that public parking or businesses falling outside of what was intended for that, that's, again, not the applicant's fault. Those operational issues need to be worked out with various operators and owners of those properties that are causing the traffic impacts. So, we'd, you know, ask you just to focus again on the criteria, whether this use is compatible, whether it's going to bring any adverse, you know, conditions to the neighborhood and the other, the business operators. I can't think of a more perfect place to have a dinner cruise boat come in and out of than John's Pass. It's a perfect use. It's going to be a great asset to that area and to the community. So, I hope that you approve it. Thank you.
I know this can be difficult at times, so thank you so much for being there in your service.
Linda, on the code parking question, section 110 971, number of spaces for uses states that there would be, if this is a party boat, one space per four passengers.
Correct.
I assume that's meant within the parking garage above and beyond the six that are in that letter?
Yes.
Okay.
In addition to that, the John's Pass has a reduction.
Go ahead and go up.
In addition to that, John's Pass has a reduction. They're only required to have 50% of the stated code parking.
So, one per eight passengers?
Correct. They would need 19 spaces.
And there are 19 spaces available in the garage?
According to the survey provided by the landowner.
Okay. And we have, make sure that survey is in the record?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Can I make one comment that I was just thinking of as everybody was talking? Where the vessel is to be moored, and this doesn't pertain, you know, exactly for the liquor license either, but where it's to be moored, are all of those pilings owned by whom?
You have to ask the applicant?
Please.
I'm glad you brought that up. Phil Henderson again, PJ S. Cruises. The dock is owned by the landlord. All the pilings are owned by the landlord. Again, Corey Hubbard mentioned something about the dock being in bad shape this past spring. At the request of the Hubbard's, all of the pilings have been, we'll say doubled. All the bad pilings have been replaced or sistered, you'd say, a new piling putting next to it, and caps, which are the boards that go across the pilings themselves that hold up the stringers that hold up the deck. So, the underside of the entire dock structure has been rebuilt. And it's my understanding that this fall, that they were going to redeck the upper side, meaning the deck plates or the deck boards and the stringers. Now, those, they're probably going to reuse those. They're probably going to pull up the deck boards and then replace stringers and then reuse the existing deck boards because they're simulated wood and they don't rot. I think that the concern of the dock falling and being a hazard has been addressed by the landlord, and it is now safe. And I'm going to feel safe bringing my passengers across. They have also added pilings in front of the steel pilings, or should I say, more toward the center of John's Pass, on the outboard side of those pilings, that we will be coming alongside. There's several triple piling clusters that we will use as fenders as the boat comes in. And I want to add one more thing, and that is that if you've been down there to look at that dock, it's disgusting as far as where the casino boat was. The big steel pilings are rusty. There's walkways there that are, it's just an eyesore. And we're not going to operate from an eyesore. We're going to go in there, and there's going to be a couple of big palm trees where those pilings are, the steel pilings are. We're going to upgrade and paint the pilings where we need to. There'll probably be bamboo along the edges. It's going to be a beautiful sight when we're done. So, we're going to do a lot of improvements because we don't want to operate from a place like that. We want it to look nice and be inviting to our guests.
But the city has no liability on any of those pilings or where the vessel is to be moored. Okay? Thank you.
We have someone else who wishes to speak. Attorney, can I let him speak?
You can. To your discretion, if you'd like to.
That's fine. Go ahead.
Robert Preston. There we go. Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore Drive. He talked about the rubbish that was coming off the boat, but I'm really curious about all the sewage. What are you doing with that? That's a big question for me. I don't want it in Boca, we have enough going in Boca Seaga Bay that we don't need anymore.
Phil Henderson again, PJ S. Cruises. That's a valid concern. We have pump-out stations at all of our docks throughout Pinellas County. I can't stand to see it. The casino boat that used to come into Clearwater to the Seminole docks, we're out there, they come in and you could just see them pumping out in the bay on their way in because they had to lighten your load right before, or near the bay. The casino boat that was at John's Pass pumped out theoretically offshore where it is legal, but I'm not sure how close to this pass they were when they actually pumped out. That is something I specifically asked the property maintenance manager. I said, where is the sewer line that we could run a PVC pipe out to so that we can pump out? And we will pump our sewage tank out. It's got the capacity to probably handle three cruises, but we'll probably pump it out after every cruise because we'll have a receptacle right there. So, that will not be an issue. And that's something I am appalled about too, by a lot of boats that do that.
So, do we, how do we proceed now?
Now, it's board discussion. You closed the public hearing and opened board discussion.
Okay.
You can ask questions.
To be sure, does anyone else?
Board discussion.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Then, that the public speaking is closed. And any discussion from the board?
I'd like to say something. Mr. Henderson, I love your idea. The ship is great. I like the atmosphere you want to bring with it. It's very tropical settings and everything. The concern I have, again, is the parking. And that's probably always going to be a problem in John's Pass, which is like Missy said, it's a good problem to have. I'm just concerned, because I have a good relationship with a lot of the tenants and merchants down there. And I know their parking spaces are just as valuable to them as it is to anyone else. And I don't want to take nothing away from them. I mean, John's Pass is our backbone for the city. It's the number one tourist destination in Pinellas County. And I feel like we need to really protect them. And I'd love to have you there. I really would because I love your concept. I love the pictures you've shown and everything. But I am very concerned about the parking and the safety. As was mentioned before, if an emergency vehicle had to get through on some of the streets, it may not be able to get through. And that's a big concern because you have to make sure the public is safe at all times. So, I'm just really torn, to be honest with you. Because, like I said, I really like it. But then again, the parking is going to always be a problem until we can get something squared away.
Mayor, may I speak? Parking is always going to be a problem. However, I think that the concept, and I think that the businesses that the petitioner has already established in different communities, shows that he's a class operation, I think. I've never met him. I've been on the boats years ago. My parents used to go on the boats years ago. I think it's a class operation. It's been around for a long time. It's not something that's coming from Miami or coming from Houston, Texas. And I think that, yes, Nancy, Commissioner Hodges, we are always going to have a parking problem. But I think that I would certainly be wanting the Calypso Breeze to make its home in John's Pass. I think it would be a good thing for the pass. I think ultimately, I think it would be good for the businesses there. And I do believe he'll be a good neighbor. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
You know, the only thing I have to say is, based on how we're supposed to rule on this, I think he's on this, I think he's answered the questions and answered them positively for us, um, and, and I think that's what we have to look at.
Right. Yeah, obviously, there's two sides to, to everything, but as far as I can tell, the applicant has addressed all the issues, and, um, I think it's a great concept. Any more discussion? All right, at this point?
What's next?
At this point, city attorney, do we just, um, get a motion?
You can entertain a motion in a second. Let me do a roll call.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may, to the city attorney, do you, would you like the motion to state the, um, condition that the board wanted to place as it relates to the, uh?
Amplified music, yes.
Amplified music, yes.
I'd say I make a motion to either deny or a motion to approve with condition that, and then, I believe you talked about, um, nine o'clock Monday through Friday and 10 o'clock on, excuse me, um, nine o'clock on Sunday through Thursday and 10 o'clock on Friday and Saturday, and that we know outdoor amplified music.
I make a motion that we approve, which one is it? The alcoholic beverage use permit. ALC 2018 dash O3 for a four-coop SPX license with the consideration of amplified music Sunday through Thursday at nine, ends at nine, and on Friday and Saturday, 10 o'clock.
Amplified or outside music?
Outside.
Amplified. It's amplified.
Outdoor amplified music, and then?
Outdoor amplified music.
With the condition, rather than the word consideration?
With the condition that it, Sunday through Thursday, it ends at nine o'clock, Saturday and, or Friday and Saturday, 10 o'clock.
So with the condition that outdoor amplified music shall be prohibited at 9:00 PM Sunday through Thursday and at 10:00 PM on Friday and Saturday?
Remember what I just said?
Well, I don't like the word "it" and things like that. I was kind of cleaning it up.
Or stated as the attorney.
There you go. Or as stated. As stated by the attorney.
As stated by the attorney.
Thank you.
So eloquently.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion as stated by Commissioner Oakley and the city attorney. With assistance from.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion before I can call the roll?
No.
Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
No.
Commissioner Downster?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes. All right, next we have, uh, staff reports, Madera Beach Town Center Development Agreement. City manager?
Madam Mayor, mayor of the board, the intent behind this item is just to update the board that we were successful in securing a land use attorney. I did send an email to this, to the board, uh, late this afternoon, updating you on a variety of different items, but put more specifics on the land use attorney. We are very lucky to have this particular individual on board to assist us. They come with an abundant amount of experience in land use as well as environmental laws. They have served as a attorney for the city of Tampa, as well as an assistant county attorney for Hillsborough County. They've already received the town center development agreements, as well as the Holton Project development agreements. They've been working thus far with the planning and zoning director, and we look to, um, bring them to the city to have individual conversation with board members and then ultimately have a discussion in the public with the, uh, with the balance of the board. So we were successful in obtaining that individual, and we've also looked to put monies in the fiscal year 2019 budget to be able to utilize their expertise as other items come before this board for consideration related to planning, development, and those types of things. So I just wanted to update the board on that, and in the email that I sent you, uh, late this afternoon, um, it's more specifics about that individual, so we're excited to have them on board. They come hot, very highly recommended and, um, have a wealth of experience working on both private sector and public sector developments and land use. So I just wanted to bring you up to speed with regards to that.
Excellent.
And staff has no further comments.
All right, next we have, um, reports and correspondence. Uh, any reports from the city commission? Uh, city attorney, any reports?
Not at this time.
City manager, anything else?
No, madam.
And city clerk?
Yes.
That being said, it is 8:39. The meeting is adjourned.